Welcome to the Candidates Forum for District Four sponsored by the Amherst League of Women Voters in partnership with Amherst Media. My name is Susan Millinger and I'm a member of the Amherst League. I will be moderating this forum. You may want to know that I'm a Shutsberry resident, so I have no horses to back at all in this race. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to encourage citizen participation in government and influence policy through education and advocacy. We welcome you to join us in the League. This meeting is being recorded. The forum will be rebroadcast by Amherst Media and available for streaming. Please check their website for details. Election Day is November 2nd. Early in-person voting will be available during business hours from Monday through Friday of the preceding week, with evening hours on Thursday. Absentee ballots may be requested until October 27th. For more information, please visit the town clerk's website. If you have a question for the candidates, please type it into the Q and A box on your Zoom screen, and we do hope that you will ask questions. We will have time for only six questions, so we apologize in advance if we do not get to yours. Remember that you can find more information about the candidates on Amherst Media and on the town's online bulletin board. In addition, the League will publish an election guide in the Amherst Bulletin the Friday before Election Day. The format for this session is as follows. There will be no opening statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. The session will end with two-minute closing statements from the candidates. The questions will be asked in different orders. We will start with alphabetical order, and after that, it will change. So the first question will be as follows. We are now three years into the Home Rule Charter. The values identified by the Charter Commission in 2017 were as follows: Citizen participation, representativeness, that is demographics and interests; effective, deliberative, and efficient structures, accountability and transparency, a clear voice for Amherst; avoidance of big-money politics; a culture of tolerance and respect; strategic and long-term planning. Given those values, how would you assess the first three years of operation under the Home Rule Charter? How could the council do better? And the question goes first to Ms. Loebz.
Thank you. I think we can all agree that there's a wealth of opportunity to improve our local government's relatability with the community, especially in regards to the inclusion of our BIPOC community and diversity, I'm sorry, excuse me, diversifying the town council. As a person of color with Black and Native American blood running through my veins, I know how it can feel like you don't have a voice in our future. If elected, I promise to seek out your opinions, hear you, and bring your concerns forward in community decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney, how about you?
Hi. The past three years have been a very interesting experiment. I give lots of kudos to the existing council who have put in hour after hour to establish a structure, establish some guidelines, and develop a sense of processes. I will say that as someone who's tried very hard to engage in these processes, I found it very difficult. So I think that the communications that we expect are difficult to find, even if one is trying very hard to track an issue. And I think so in that sense, I'm disappointed in that aspect of it. I think that is probably what caused me to run myself, that I really wanted, I like to listen to people. I like to hear opinions and bring them forward in whatever is being discussed. And I felt that there was a dismissiveness on the part of many of the boards that I weighed in on for input from the community. And I think that's an attitude that we clearly need to change. As far as big money, I think this is certainly very, very different than the old town meeting institution where one could walk with neighbors and run for office. Because there are only 13 of us here, it has become something of money. And I feel that that's a barrier to people who in fact would like to participate and could participate, but it is literally in the thousands of dollars when one starts to pay for brochures or for signs and for website development. So I think I'd like to see less focus on that, certainly. In terms of long-term planning, gosh, I think we could go into that in a great deal.
Thanks, Ms. Rooney. Could you wrap it up in another second or two?
We haven't done good long-term planning, and I would love to participate in helping improve that.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Yes, thank you. I think this council has worked really hard to live up to the goals of the Charter. And I think there are places where we've done a good job on transparency. Because we're subject to open meeting law, all of our deliberations are occurring in the public eye. I know some of the public has had to watch us copy-edit documents in real time, and that's not always fun or interesting, but it makes sure the public can see what's going on. And I know I was proud as Chair of the Town Council Committee on Appointments to lead my committee to develop an appointments process that made town council appointments in Amherst more transparent than in any other of our surrounding communities. I think where we've struggled is representation. We are not a body that looks like our community. We are a majority-renter community, 53% of households are renter-occupied. I am the only renter on the council. We have great generational diversity in our community, and yet at 34 years old, I'm the youngest member of the council by a decade. We are almost an exclusively white body. And so I think there, we've fallen short. And I think part of that is identifying some of the barriers of why folks might not want to run. Our meetings are way too long, and we have a lot of work to do to make the council a more manageable job, so that it's not just retired folks that can run for the council. It's working folks, it's folks who have young families. And as far as big-money politics, I did introduce a local campaign finance bylaw back in 2019 to try to reduce the influence of money. It failed by one vote, so I think we have work to do there, too. But I'm proud of what we've done. There's always room for improvement. It's always a more perfect union striving towards, it's never perfection in the moment.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Now, the next question will go first to Ms. Rooney. So the question is, what can town council do to retain existing small businesses and attract new ones?
Thank you. The opportunity for new business in downtown especially, but in the town centers, is a very complex one. We have changing real estate markets, we have changing retail markets. But I think there is an effort to encourage development in the town center that actually enlivens it, that brings some beauty and some character to the downtown that I think some opportunities there are being missed, especially with some of our zoning. In a zoning for a mixed-use building, the folks on the Community Resource Council Committee declined to support the interest of having a greater retail space in the bottom floor of a building. And I think if we don't build commercial space, we certainly can't provide it. I would love to see much more in the way of pop-up businesses. And working with the Business Improvement District, I think is a good way to bring some of the desire for enlivened streets and streetscapes downtown to the retail market. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Rooney. Ms. Loebz, how about you?
Thank you. Well, as a small business owner, I praise the recent model that we've seen of the Mill District. I believe that they understand the complex needs of business, and we can see how that is forming. There's space for a community, and there's especially traffic for them. With that said, we need more customers in street traffic than we have for new businesses, small businesses, and especially BIPOC businesses to sustain, especially during COVID recovery. Concerts on a band show and the common performances on the Drake will help revitalize a vibrant downtown. It attracts people like me to return to their hometown and invest in businesses here. Live-work spaces that will attract entrepreneurs will also help. And that could also help graduates stay a while and want to raise their kids in Amherst. I think we have endless opportunities to attract people to open business in this town. But again, we will have to make sure that it's sustainable for them to be here and plant roots. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Loebz. Mr. Ross, how about you?
Yeah, Amherst has long suffered for a reputation as, if you want to start a business, go elsewhere. And I think there's things that we can do to change that. So in the council, we passed an emergency zoning amendment to streamline the permitting processes for businesses to open in Amherst, and that was an emergency response to COVID. But I think there is lessons we can learn from that and pieces of that that we can make permanent to make it easier to get a permit to open a business in Amherst. But the best way to do this is to make Amherst a destination. And that means investing in infrastructure downtown. Look at the Kendrick Park Playground, that's bringing families from all over into Amherst, who are then going and patronizing our local businesses, our local restaurants. We need to make sure that we have parking available for folks. That's why I've moved forward a destination parking garage, so folks know if they come to Amherst, they have a place to park, they're not going to go elsewhere. We need to make sure that our downtown is appealing. That means smart design guidelines that look at not just what the buildings look like, but the pedestrian experience, wide sidewalk, street trees, to make it enjoyable for people to wander our downtown and go from business to business. And so if we really put the investment in to make our downtown a destination and make that consumer demand happen, then businesses will want to open here. But the last piece of this is we need someone who's on top of this. We had an Economic Development Director who left in January 2020, and we still have not filled that position. We need someone whose job it is to support local businesses, to bring them in, and to look at the economic future of Amherst.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. Mr. Ross, you're going to get the next question first, and the question is, what is your position on the major recommendations made by the Community Safety Working Group's report?
Thank you. So the Community Safety Working Group did incredible work in an incredibly short amount of time, and I give them a lot of credit for all of their efforts. I'm proud that we are implementing the CREST program. I supported that program, the Community Responder Program. I voted in the council to double the number of responders hired in the first fiscal year to set that program up for success. It's going to be a financial challenge to make that program sustainable over the long term, but I'm committed to seeing that happen, and I'm committed to moving forward with their other recommendations. I wasn't sure I understood all of them at first, but having met with the co-chairs and talked through them and listened to the needs and the justification, it's clear that we need to implement their recommendations in order for us to have a community where BIPOC folks feel safe and secure and supported. Because what we're hearing from the BIPOC community right now is that that's not the case. And for me, as someone who is a cis-white man, I don't know all the answers, but we have a group that has given us clear recommendations for how to do this. And I think we have to listen to those recommendations and then work to find a way to fund them. And it's not going to be easy, but if we're truly committed to being an anti-racist town, if we're truly committed to racial equity in town, then we need to pony up and do it. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Ms. Rooney, how about you?
I think I would take most of the words that Mr. Ross just said. The Community Safety Working Group has done an astounding job in developing recommendations, and I think each and every one of those needs to be considered. The idea of finding the funding, of course, is something when you implement a new program or institute new directives, sometimes it takes some tweaking within the ranks of other departments and other organizations to find the funds to support those moves. But I think it's incredibly important to move forward in that arena. The CREST program needs to be implemented and supported. It is such a vital way of transitioning to alternative interventions so that people, in fact, we reduce profiling. I strongly support all of those actions. Again, my focus has been on sort of the physical aspects of Amherst community, but the underlying population support is critical in my mind, and I would support that strongly. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Loebz, how about you?
Thank you. So, Amherst, it's time to level up, level the field, learn from the past, listen to the present, heed to the CREST program, and decide that the buck stops here. Implement all reliable opportunities that support BIPOC youth so they feel loved, valued, and respected by their home or new town. Invest in them. Open doors that teach and lead to generational wealth. Recently, I was able to help curate the Juneteenth Amherst 2021 Celebration, during which time I was reacquainted with my four-time's great-grandfather, Christopher Thompson, who traveled to Texas to bring the news of liberation on Juneteenth, 1865. I've become so inspired by him to move this forward. Surely, as a community, if our resident here, we claim him, if he was able to sort out those problems, if he was able to change the nation and the world, surely we are able to figure out how to be more inclusive of the BIPOC community, more respectful of them here in Amherst. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Loebz. I've been asked to remind the audience that we really would love to have some questions from you all, and we haven't received anything yet. You can use the Q and A box. Also, apparently, we've been receiving questions via our League website, and we will be including those as appropriate. Let's see. Who has not answered this question? No, you've all answered this question, so we should move on to the next question, which is, what policies, and very appropriate, what policies or programs should council introduce to increase the representation and voices of minority communities in local government decisions? And the first question goes to Ms. Loebz.
Well, in continuing, I believe that we should follow the Community Safety Working Group's recommendations to look into the DEI department and again, continue on with CREST. Our residents deserve it. Myself personally, I have nearly 20 years of experience bringing together people from very different sectors, academic, nonprofit, for-profit, to help hundreds of underserved youth in New York City access internships and job opportunities and the support they need to be successful. I would use this experience to collaborate with others and benefit underserved members of our community. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I think in 2018, probably every person who was running for council said that one of their goals was to increase representation and participation of diverse communities in the council, and that's one that we've fallen short on. And I think part of the reason for that is we're an exclusively, almost exclusively, white council trying to figure that out. And so recently, we got the recommendation from the Community Safety Working Group of their successor committee, and one of the things that they recommended was stipends for town committees, starting with their successor committee. And I think that's an important thing to hear, because they talked about the need, not only to compensate people for their time, but to offset the costs that are associated with service. Because sometimes when you're running to a meeting, you have to grab takeout. Sometimes you have to find folks to watch your children. And so we need to make sure that there's not a financial barrier to service to the town, and it can't just be limited to compensation for the council and the school committee. We also have to look into breaking down barriers elsewhere, translation, because we have a fairly large, non-native English-speaking population. But I think that starting point was listening to the folks who have done the work and who are part of those communities, instead of us trying to prescribe the best way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney?
Hi, thank you. The word "listen," the word "listening" is a very important element to add to all that. I appreciate hearing it. I think listening is the very first step and increasing communications with folks. As I mentioned very early on, the need for communication from our councils, from the community, the dialogue back and forth is really important to achieve and has not yet. We have not gotten to the pinnacle yet of that effort. Part of the communication development is being able to convey concerns, and I don't see at this point as much in the way of council policy to actually support that. So that would be a very important thing that I would like to pursue in just improving the communication chains. I have found it myself very difficult to engage, and if I'm finding it difficult, I can't imagine what someone who needs to do this only periodically or wants to engage in a certain topic wouldn't have difficulty as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be about climate and our responses to it. What are the next steps for town council towards achieving Amherst greenhouse gas reduction goals of 25% by 2025? And the question goes first to Ms. Rooney.
Hi, thanks. Greenhouse gas reduction can start with a pretty robust program for weatherization and for opportunity to improve heating systems. That's one small facet. There are a number of programs out there, including the electric companies who pay for audits, who will do all of that as part of their outreach programs. And I think the town could piggyback on that kind of a program to really encourage people to move into that arena and do their energy audits and the weatherization that follows. An important aspect, since it has been mentioned that so much of our population lives in rental units in town, I think that our rental policies can support and require audits and weatherization as a tool to getting their permits, first permit first and then renewal of permits. So having them step up to the plate, I think if people are, if investor owners are interested in maintaining a permit status, then they need to upgrade and keep their buildings safe, healthy, and reduce carbon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Thank you. So this is an important question to me. I was proud to partner with Councilor Dumont to write, to co-author and co-sponsor the legislation that created the Energy and Climate Action Committee, which was the first past piece of legislation by the council. And I've watched that committee do incredible work to push our town to act on climate. And so I would like to see us move rapidly towards achieving the bold climate action goals that we adopted. There's a lot we can do to do that. The most immediate thing we can do is pass the library project, which will reduce the lifetime carbon emissions of our library by 40% and make our library net-zero ready. As we move forward with other capital projects, we need to make sure we're applying our net-zero energy bylaw. And I think we always need to focus, and I appreciate Pam for bringing this up, put the focus on renters. We need to apply a climate and environmental justice lens to achieving these climate action goals. I remember what it was like being a struggling graduate student and paying so much money for heating oil, because the heat was leaking out of my single-pane windows and my non-insulated walls. We need to put our environmental justice communities first as we're tackling these goals. I have written and proposed a rental utility disclosure bylaw that requires landlords to disclose heating costs to tenants, that promotes cost transparency, which helps our renters' budget, but it also provides an incentive for landlords to upgrade and weatherize their rental units. That's a first step. There's a lot more to do.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Ms. Loebz, how about you?
Thank you. In my opinion, it's not only our responsibility to ensure that these important issues are a top priority, but that decisions around these topics are centered around the knowledge that we do not inherit at birth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children. One way we can hold ourselves accountable is to ensure that all current capital projects going forward are meeting every sustainable measure possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney?
I just replied.
Has everybody replied to that one? Sorry, I got carried away.
I was advocating for rental permits be tied to audits, energy audits, and weatherization. So thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. We've seen, you all are so concise and to the point that I think we have another, again, have time for a seventh question. What have you done or what would you do as district councillor to increase the supply of affordable housing in Amherst? And we'll start with Ms. Loebz.
Okay. So, my map of Amherst District Four is the beating heart and welcome mat of downtown. Centers between the purple area that is Amherst College and the maroon area that is UMass. Instituates issues largely result from this geography and the laudable success of our higher-end economy. I will build bridges and start conversations with people who are building our neighborhood and ask them to consider our threats and opportunities we identify, to assure, without telling them how to do their jobs, that our vision of the future is respected and inclusive and included in our plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney?
Could you kindly repeat the question?
What would you do as district councillor to increase the supply of affordable housing in Amherst?
Thank you. I think there are a number of ways to tackle, there have to be a number of ways to tackle that problem. We have a limited housing supply in terms of single-family homes. The opportunity to create accessory dwelling units in association with single-family homes has always been a tool in our toolbox to increase the housing supply. But I think one of the means here is that we need to have sort of a comprehensive approach to especially creating opportunities for families. Everything from encouraging sellers to put deep restrictions on their properties for sale to families, for sale to families instead of to investors, to encourage realtors to advocate hard for family and ownership, and also especially enforcement staff to help keep a sharper eye on the rentals that are here. I think creating the affordable units in town means having a better supply overall of housing in good quality and good condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Thank you. Well, so housing affordability is what motivated me to run in the first place in 2018, and it's been my main focal area in the past three years. I have voted for municipal funding and resources for three separate affordable housing developments, two of which will be located right here in District Four. I very proudly voted to strengthen our inclusionary zoning bylaw, which mandates that new developments that include 10 or more units must have affordable housing, so no more large apartment buildings that cater only to luxury rentals. So we've done a lot on affordable housing, but there's a lot more to do. Now that we have that inclusionary zoning bylaw, now it's time to unlock greater housing production, because any new mixed-use or apartment building will now have affordable units. We need to look for smart, progressive zoning changes that can help create not only a capital-A affordable housing, but also housing that's affordable to working-class folks, to moderate-income folks, things like accessory dwelling units, things like easier permitting pathways for duplexes and triplexes, to create a more diverse housing stock. Because right now, we have a zoning code that really favors single-family homes on large lots, and that's a recipe for making homeownership out of reach for a lot of people. So we need to look to diversify our housing stock and create more opportunities for average folks like myself, who don't make that much money, who can't afford a $500,000 house, to achieve homeownership in addition to the affordable rental opportunities that we've continued to create over the past three years. Thank you.
Thank you. There's the question of what you see as a district candidate is the main issue or issues for your fourth district, and what would you do to address them? And let's start by asking Mr. Ross.
Thank you. So I think three things come to mind. So one is infrastructure and especially roads and sidewalks. I'm looking at the sidewalk in front of my house right now. If you're someone with a physical disability or mobility impairment, so many of our sidewalks in town just aren't accessible. And so we really need to recommit to capital and especially sidewalks so that we can have walkable neighborhoods. Affordable housing, we just Affordable housing, we just talked about, but that's a big one. But not just affordable housing, but starter homes for for families and young professionals so they can set down roots here. We need to work to stem the tide of rental conversion. That means that any house that goes on the market is bought up by an LLC and turned into to a rental so that folks who want to set roots in our town and buy a house have the ability to do so. And the the issue of rental conversion is something we see throughout District Four. We want to make sure the houses that go on the market on High Street or Jeffrey Lane or Justice Drive aren't immediately snatched up by investors. And the final thing would be our schools. If you are a family in District Four, you're sending your child to Wildwood Elementary or Fort River. And those are school buildings that are detracting from our students' learning, not supporting it. And so we need to ensure that we replace both of those buildings and give our children elementary schools that support their learning. So schools, housing and infrastructure are the three biggest issues I think that we're facing here in District Four.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Ms. Loops, how about you?
I would definitely agree that schools, housing and infrastructure are definitely the biggest issues in District Four. And again, I think that we should continue the conversation and build bridges with people who are building our downtown about incentives like rent to own or starter help and assistance to own a home or invest in a second home that someone could afford to rent to lower income restaurant, I'm sorry, residents. And support and continue conversations that find creative solutions in partnership with colleges around housing shortages. In regards to the school, I am committed to surround myself with counsel with parents in the area to see how they feel and what they feel will best fit the needs of area children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney, how about you?
Hi, in District Four, since we're all in District Four, we all have some of those same issues. The need for a new school is paramount, I think above any other capital project. A healthy and safe school for the kids. We came to Amherst because of the school system and we would like to have that opportunity for others as well. Infrastructure is one, certainly as we as we walk the streets and hand out our our information to our to our constituents. There are lots of roads in poor condition, lots of sidewalks, especially in the since I live quite near the downtown area and the ability to access the town center is is sometimes very tricky. I think a focus on improving the cycling safety and the pedestrian safety in and out of town is a really is a really important thing. Everyone has everyone has touched on the need for housing. Amherst has a big investment bullet on our back and we are a target for investors in the real estate world. There again, there I could go into great detail, but there are lots of tools that we need to apply to starting to turn houses from rentals into family owned and occupied buildings. There are many examples in other college towns that have worked and we need to I'd love to see a task force that actually focuses on this issue itself and starts to implement some of those tactics.
Thank you. Thank you. Here's another question. A questioner asked says, I would love to hear from the candidates what they would do to heal and bridge the divides that seem to have appeared and the assumption that candidates' views are due to endorsements that they receive. Ms. Rooney, would you like to start with that one?
Sure. I ran specifically as an independent candidate, meaning that I did not seek endorsement by any of the organizations in town. I felt that it was important for me to listen hard and then try to implement what I'm what I'm hearing as far as a councillor. I I did not have an agenda that I needed to prescribe to. I think this is it's an opportunity, of course, to listen to people better. I go back to my conversation about about communication. I I do want to hear from people. I do want to see their responses addressed in some way. We've been stymied by in some ways by Zoom meetings. The perfunctory three minutes of here's here's the the comment, thank you very much, next is so prevalent in all of the conversations that we've been having. I I am just simply a strong believer in listening and bridging divides. As a manager of space on the UMass campus, I had to listen to both parties and help create a win win situation. So I think my real goal is to help people bridge those gaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, how about you?
Yeah, so back in 2018, I was endorsed by several political action committees. One of them was Amherst Forward. I was also endorsed by the Sierra Club. I was also endorsed by the LGBTQ Victory Fund. I was also endorsed by Run for Something, which supports progressive millennial candidates. But the only pack that anyone ever wanted to talk about was Amherst Forward. And there were so many assumptions prescribed to me because of that endorsement. I always found that to be really unfortunate because regardless of who endorses me, I'm an independent voice on the council. All 13 councillors are an independent voice on the council. I vote based on what I believe is best for my community, what I hear from my constituents, and I vote based strongly on my values, not based on what some organization tells me or who endorsed me. My very first action on the council was to partner with councillor Dumont to write the legislation to create the Energy and Climate Action Committee. Councillor Dumont and I agree on very little, but we found common ground. Me and councillor Pam disagree on a whole lot of things when it comes to zoning. And yet councillor Pam and I were vocal advocates of the renovation of the North Common. Councillor Schreiber and I agree on a lot of zoning things, but he was the primary opponent of my local campaign finance bylaw. So I think we have to recognize that coalitions shift and that people are all independent thinkers and that when it comes to different issues, we find common ground and we find divisions, but it's never a clear line. And that's what I my experience has been on the council, but I always vote my values and I want to be clear on that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Loops, how about you?
Hi. So yes, my first experience running for Amherst Town Council has definitely had a little gray cloud go over by this divide. With that said, I'm a uniter, not a divider. I have accepted endorsements from Amherst Forward, the Progressive Coalition of Amherst and San Rosenberg. And I seek to hear and represent my district's hopes, fears and opportunities at Town Hall and to people who impact our future. And that would not be hindered or distracted by an argument that predates me or ones that arise in the future. Another way is to diversify the town council with more independent thinkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I think unless I get instructed from the powers that be, it's time for our concluding statements. Is that true? Okay. I guess I'm allowed to ask one more question. The remote meetings necessitated by COVID-19 have had a few positive impacts, including greater public access and more opportunities for busy people and people with economic transportation and certainly other challenges to tune in and participate in meetings held by the town council, council committees and other committees and boards. In the short term and the longer term future, to what extent do you support continuing the public's remote access to the meetings of town council and other committees and boards? I'm so confused about the order that everybody's answering questions. I hope everybody feels they're getting equal time in the different spots. Okay. Ms. Rooney, how would you like to start on that one?
Sure. I think I would be a supporter of continuing some form of of online or distant distant learning, if you will. I think we have definitely seen easier access for people who don't have transportation necessarily to meetings. But I think we we have long been advocating for the opportunity for Zoom meetings where the the actual participants in the in the in the hearing room can be seen and and heard. Often it's just the panelists themselves who can see and hear each other and everyone else is is not visible to each other. Having the opportunity and that technology is out there, the opportunity to actually see the other participants is really important in that. I think we need to do a better job of understanding meeting times and days of weeks. I think that's one of the the deterrents to more people being able to participate. So I guess my my final answer is that I love in person discussions, but I think we need to be able to bring and maintain some level of technology that enables folks to to still participate. Right?
Thank you. Mr. Ross, how about you?
Yeah, so in the past, what has it been, a year and a half? While while the council has been on Zoom, while committees have been on Zoom, we have seen more young people coming to public comment, more renters coming to public comment, more young families or members of young families showing up to public comment. The Zoom environment has made our meetings more accessible. Now, to some extent, state law is going to dictate what we are and are not allowed to do. But if we can continue to do hybrid meetings where councillors or committee members can meet in person and conduct their business in person, but the public can attend via Zoom and give comment via Zoom, that's the best way to go. Because I I've talked to folks who have kids who say that they'll put the council meeting on on their counter while they're cooking dinner. And then when it's time for public comment, they can just unmute and they don't have to stop cooking dinner for their kids. That's important. I don't want someone having to sit in the town room for hours just to make their public comment. I don't want someone having to trek to Town Hall in the middle of the winter for their three minutes. We need to increase accessibility of the council and the Zoom environment has been one way that we've been able to do that and we've seen the results. So to the extent that we can legally continue that, I think we have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Loops?
Thank you. I think one area that we can start to improve online communications would be to, one, make sure that we are providing everyone an equal opportunity to participate. We need more interpretation services, sign language for one. I do believe that we should look at the times that these meetings are occurring just to make sure that either we are being flexible to allow more people to participate or just exploring every avenue, whether there are polls, quick drop offs communication, just ways to allow our community to be involved. I've talked to a lot of neighbors who, you know, they talk about, oh, I would love to be on this meeting. However, you know, this is happening during bath time for the kids or for whatever reason. People with numerous jobs like myself, renters, who are all over the place. So I think that while this is a great idea, we should definitely improve our ways to allow the community to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We're ready now for the your candidate, the candidate's closing statements. And we'll go back to alphabetical order again. So Ms. Loops, you have the first shot, two minutes of closing comments.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank the hosts and viewers for your commitment of valuable time to learn more about the candidates running for town council. I will close out mining what differentiate differentiates me from others running. I'm a creative problem solver and small business leader. This mindset and experience makes me uniquely qualified to negotiate solutions and difficult challenges. I will never blow up progress with political gangmanship or design demands or try to tell people how to do your jobs. I'm comfortable reaching out to developers, asking for community dialogue and presenting community concerns and visions. Humanizing relationships between policymakers, developers and vulnerable neighborhoods is the only way forward. And this bridge building is my strength. My way forward is to achieve equity, inclusion and homeownership opportunities. A thriving downtown with a peaceful peaceful community through communication and collaboration. District Four is my ancestral home. I'm the sixth generation of my Black and Native American family to live on Smell Street, Baker Street, Hazel Avenue, North Hampton Road, Railroad Street, South Amity and Chestnut Street, to attend Amherst Public Schools and enjoy concerts on Common and films at Amherst Cinema. I have albums of photos you haven't seen or experienced from the diverse rich culture that goes back in Amherst. I'm invested in this town. I love this town. I represent the best of this town. I want to share the benefits of my perspective with you and bring this town forward with unity and respect. Thank you for your engagement. Thank you for your open heart. And thank you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loops. Ms. Rooney, your turn.
Thank you very much. And thanks to the League for for presenting this forum. Good afternoon. I am Pam Rooney and I do want to represent all of you in District Four. Being heard is is critical to having confidence in your government. And many that I've spoken to across our walks in the neighborhood do not feel heard. It took me over two years to discover that councillors Schreiber and Ross were actually holding their mandated district meetings. I had never seen or received notice of those events. It's a high priority for me, therefore, to improve and increase communications with you all, but I will need all of your help to make that happen. Wherever I've lived, I like to pitch in and contribute to my community. Here, I've been on the Community Preservation Act Committee, an Atkins Corner Study Team. I sing with Pioneer Valley Symphony or even Town Meeting for about 10 years and the Planning Board for six years. With my design and back and planning background, I actively weigh in on zoning discussions. My critique of downtown development is not that big buildings shouldn't replace empty parking lots, rather that these buildings really aren't contributing their fair share to any positive and exciting people and planting spaces or that more place for startup commercial venture commercial ventures that will enliven downtown are created. And don't you as a as a district think that we deserve more of the win win? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Yes, thank you to the League for hosting this and thank you to Anika and Pam for running alongside me in this election. So back in 2018, I asked the voters of this district to take a chance on me. I hadn't run for office before. I hadn't really engaged in local politics, but I really thought that I had something to contribute to this town. And I was so thankful to be given the opportunity over the past three years to represent this district. And I've worked incredibly hard over those three years, in many ways harder because I felt like I had to prove myself to this district. I was met with so much skepticism when I was running in 2018 because I was young, because I was a renter to to prove my investment in this community and my commitment to the council. And I believe I've done that. I have shown up. I've done my homework. I have written and introduced bylaws and policies. I have been open to compromise and collaboration. Even though you may have disagreed with the vote I took or a policy I supported, I hope you've seen the work that I've put in and the investment I have to this council. And now I'm asking for an opportunity to continue that work for another two years because there's a lot more work to do. We have to replace Wildwood and Fort River. We have to give our firefighters and our DPW workers facilities that they deserve to to that that live up to what they deserve. We need to implement the Community Safety Working Group recommendations. We need to meet our climate action goals. We need to make sure that our downtown recovers from COVID. And I'm asking you to give me another two years to do the work to do that. So you can find out more about what I've done over the past three years and what I hope to do over the next two at my website, evanforamherst.com. That's Evan number four amherst.com. Thank you, and I hope I get your vote on November 2nd.
You ladies want an extra minute or 50 seconds because Evan took them? Pam?
Well, I was gonna say, I thought we had two minutes for our for our final discussion and and I think we only got a minute and a half, so. I'm fine.
Mind keeper, is that true? Well, how about taking taking a few more seconds, take for 10 more seconds if you will look, getting more seconds.
Are you speaking to me?
Yeah, it looks like you're getting more seconds and so, Anika, and I guess Evan will too.
Well, to continue what I was saying, in the in the zoning arena, we have been pushing, the council's been pushing for a number of zoning changes. And I really want to be on the council when these discussions occur as the only councillor with planning board and in depth zoning experience. I have a vision for Amherst and not an agenda, so I do hope that you'll vote for me for for District Four. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pamela. Anika?
Thank you. I will thank everyone again for giving me the opportunity to be here. I am I'm excited about this opportunity and would be so honored to represent District Four where I'm from. And you can also, please, I welcome you to visit my website, which is anikafor, the number four, amherst.com. Thank you.
Thanks, Anika. Evan?
We all we all love using that. We all we all love using that District Four number four in our websites.
Yeah.
I think I I made my closing statement pretty clear, but I do hope you'll go to my website, look at what I've done, look at my priorities on the council and what I hope to achieve because there's a lot more work I want to do on behalf of this community, and I hope I've earned your support over the past three years to continue for another two. So thank you so much to everyone who's watching and the League and to Anika and Pam. It's been a great experience.
Thank you, Yisri. Thank you to the candidates. Yes, sorry.
I was just thanking everyone. Thank you all.
Oh, sorry. Everybody's panelists, you've all had your say? Okay, let me finish up. Thank you to all the candidates for participating in this forum, but especially for being willing to represent the citizens of Amherst in your local government. Voters, remember to visit Amherst Media to view the candidates' short presentations there and to look for their statements on the town bulletin board. And be sure to pick up a copy of the Amherst Bulletin on the Friday before Election Day for the League's election guide. Thank you all and good night, good afternoon, really. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.